We formed our quorum at the clear, the meeting open. The AM session of the Special FC will run from nine AM to twelve forty PM. We will have two sessions. The purpose of the Special FC meeting is to examine the draft estimates twenty twenty-three twenty-four the government to ensure that the amongst all will not be more than is necessary for implementing the relevant policies. May I remind members that all questions must be relevant to the draft estimates? If members would like to follow up on replies from the government, please quote the reply serial number on the top right-hand corner of the paper such as HXB O O one. If member would like to seek supplementary questions, then you can do so in writing and present those questions to Secretary before the end of the meeting today. And the supplementary questions will only get written replies. Depending on the numbers with or members waiting to speak, I will determine the speaking time. Please press the request to speak button. I would like to welcome officials from the Health Bureau to answer questions from members in relation to the Bureau. All right, Dr. Lee Billy, Acting Secretary for Health.
Thank you, Chair. In twenty twenty-three twenty-four, the estimated recurring government expenditure on healthcare is one oh four point four billion dollars, which accounts for eighteen point six percent of the government's total recurrent expenditure. Given that our society has resumed normalcy in full, we no longer set aside any additional provision in twenty twenty-three twenty-four or anti epidemic measures. After discounting such provision for twenty twenty-two twenty-three, the estimated recurring expenditure on healthcare for twenty twenty-three twenty-four is about eight percent higher than that of last year. The recurrent provision on healthcare has even recorded accumulative growth of forty-four percent from twenty eighteen nineteen to twenty twenty-three twenty-four. New and additional resources available this financial year are mainly used for following enhanced or newly introduced public healthcare services. Under support for the hospital authority, the government will continue to increase progressively the recurrent provision for the HA according to the annual funding arrangement agreed in twenty seventeen, having regard to population growth rates and demographic changes. For twenty twenty-three twenty-four, a request of pension of nine eighty-nine point two billion dollars would be provided to the HA representing an increase of over forty percent as compared to twenty eighteen nineteen. The HA will utilize the funding to enhance its healthcare services, which include enhancing the clinical services for patients having serious diseases such as cancer, providing additional public hospital beds, providing additional operating theater sessions, implementing measures to reduce the waiting time for specialist outpatient services, including streamlined refer arrangements for cross specialty cases, integrated clinics to provide multidisciplinary support and introducing in phases a new service for drug collection and delivery and further promoting the use of telehealth services. The government will allocate to the Department of Health an additional time limit provision of about one thousand one hundred and six million dollars, a total of six five three two million dollars for five years from twenty twenty-three twenty-four to twenty twenty-seven twenty-eight for meeting the class flow requirements under elderly healthcare vouchers scheme, including the three-year pilot scheme. In the coming year, the DH will also continue to strengthen its existing services by inter alia, continuing to implement the colorectal cancer screening program, implementing a three-year breast cancer screening pilot program by non-government organizations and continuing to implement the vaccination subsidy scheme, disease-related influenza vaccination school outreach program and the residential care home vaccination program. For healthcare facilities, as announced in the twenty twenty-two policy address, the government will press ahead with the first ten-year hospital development plan HDP, adding about sixty-four hundred hospital beds and around eighty operating theaters in the next five years. We plan to see funding approval from the FC in the current legislative session for three projects under the first ten-year HDP and look forward to members' support. Meanwhile, the second ten-year HDP will include the development of a hospital network in the northern metropolis. The HA is actively reviewing and planning for the second ten-year HDP to dovetail with the government's plan. Primary healthcare is an integral part of the entire healthcare system, accounting for about twenty percent of the expenditure on public healthcare. To balance healthcare resources and alleviate the over-concentration of pressure on public hospitals, the government put forward the primary healthcare blueprint at the end of last year to settle a series of key reform initiatives for enhancing Hong Kong's primary healthcare services. For the setting up of district health centers, DHCs and DHC expresses in all districts across the city by twenty twenty-two, the government has attained the goal of extending service coverage to all eighteen districts in Hong Kong. As recommended by the footprint, DHCs will progressively strengthen their role as both the coordinator of community primary healthcare services and a case manager in order to, on the other hand, support primary healthcare doctors and function as district healthcare service and resource hubs connecting public and private services provided by different sectors in the community. Concurrently, the government is strengthening the family doctor for all regime. To ensure the quality of primary healthcare services, the government has been encouraging primary healthcare service providers to enroll in the primary care directory as soon as possible. As recommended by the blueprint, the existing PCD will be transformed into a primary care register to serve as a central register for all primary healthcare professionals under one umbrella. And as a tool for standardizing primary healthcare services and assuring their quality, the government is endeavoring to take forward progressively the various recommendations of the blueprint at the short, medium, and long term. In twenty twenty-three twenty-four, the government will focus on the launch of the three-year chronic disease cold care pilot scheme and a three-year pilot scheme to enhance the elderly healthcare voucher scheme. Details will be announced in the third quarter of twenty twenty-three. The government is also actively planning for transforming the primary healthcare office currently under the Health Bureau into the Primary Healthcare Commission and will announce details in due course. Tobacco control, health hazard caused by smoking unknown by all. The government has set a target in towards twenty twenty-five strategy and action plan to prevent and control non-communicable diseases in Hong Kong to further reduce smoking prevalence to seven point eight percent by twenty twenty-five. In this year's budget, the government has proposed to increase the duty on cigarette by sixty cents to two point five oh six per stick, representing an increase of thirty-one point four eight percent. The proportion of the increased tobacco duty to the retail price of cigarettes will rise or has risen from around sixty-two percent to about sixty-four percent when factoring in the concurrent increase in the retail price by some tobacco companies or retail outlets. Bear in mind the target of bringing the tobacco duty rate to seventy-five percent as recommended by the WHO will continue to review the overall effectiveness of tobacco control measures and the pace of future rate adjustments. And in parallel, step-up efforts to promote smoking cessation as well as slow enforcement against illicit cigarettes. We will launch a public consultation exercise on next phase tobacco control before middle of this year to collect the views from the public. Development of Chinese medicine. As CM is an integral part of Hong Kong's healthcare system, the government will continue to actively promote the high-quality development of CM in Hong Kong on all fronts in collaboration with the CM sector through the implementation of various policies and measures, including creating the post of Commissioner for Chinese medicine development and enhancing the functions of the Chinese medicine unit. Working with the sector to take forward the formulation of a blueprint for the development of CM, including the quota for government subsidized outpatient services, regularizing and expanding integrated Chinese western medicine services, exploring measures to promote the professional development, training, and research of CM practitioners and CM drug personnel, and deepening Hong Kong's collaboration with the mainland and the international community. In particular, the Chinese Medicine Development Fund officially launched in twenty nineteen has rolled down more than ten funding schemes of different nature to benefit various practitioners and organizations in the CM sector. The CMDF supports the holistic development of CM in Hong Kong all fronts, covering tele-nurturing facility and quality and force enhancement, registration of propriety CM, promotion of CM studies and research on CM supporting and anti-apocalyptic efforts. The government plans to inject an additional five hundred million dollars into the fund to support the commissioning of large-scale training, publicity, and research projects on key strategic themes. We further discuss and work out the themes and directions with the sector, such as preparing for the commissioning of the Chinese medicine hospital, further enhancing the role of CM in the healthcare system, stepping up the application of information technology in CM, and supporting projects enabling the CM sector to further the development in other cities of the Guangdong, Hong Kong, Macau, GBA, the mainland, and overseas markets. Meanwhile, the government is pressing ahead with the preparation work of two flagship institutions for promoting the development of CM, namely Hong Kong's first CMH and Government Chinese Medicine Testing Institute with a view to commissioning the facilities in phases starting from twenty five. Chairman, my colleagues and I are now happy to answer questions from members.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. We have about a hundred minutes for this session. Fifteen members have pressed the request to speak button. To allow more time for members, we will first have five minutes round. And for members who intend to speak, please come into the chamber as soon as possible. The first is Mr. Ma Fengkong. I'd like to follow up on question HHB O five five, a question by Mr. Chow Siu Chong, and that is incidents in public hospitals. Just on the eleventh, an automatic door frame of the Eastern Hospital collapsed causing injuries to some medical personnel. Now, we have seen a spike of incidents related to hospital facilities. I'd like to know the number of healthcare personnel injured and have you compiled any statistics on the number of wards and operating theaters and facilities that had to be suspended? And I'd like to know the number of surgeries and services affected. And I'd like to know the delay caused to some surgeries as a result of such incidents. Ms. Lee. Dr. Lee, I would defer to Dr. Cole from HA. Dr. Cole, please. Now, for operating theaters, the lamp at an OT of UCH United Christian Hospital fellow, and we provided statistics back then, but now I do not have them at hand. In the recent month, we have reviewed the medical equipment, including OT lamps, et cetera, of various hospitals for facilities that hang down from the ceiling. We have completed preliminary review. Apart from the light at the OT now before, now for the Eastern Hospital incident, two members of our staff suffer minor bruises. And as for the for services affected by the incident, at the OT of UCH, while there were some interruption, but then is now okay now. We are conducting a review, hopefully can be completed in three months. And by then, we will have recommendations for the public. Any follow-up, Mr. Ma? Nothing, thank you. I read out the speaking order, Mr. Chen, Ms. Chen Hua Yan, Mr. Chen Chen Yong, Mr. Adrian Ho, Mr. Long Man Kwan, Mr. Stanley Lee, Mr. Li Tong Kwan, Mr. Chen Kim Po, Professor Chen Wing Kwan, Mr. Chow Siu Chong, Dr. So Chang Wing, Dr. Tang Yue Hung, Mr. Lam Chan Shing, Dr. David, Mr. Tang Kar Bill, and Dr. Chau Man Kwan. Ms. Rebecca Chen, thank you. Reply number O one one. Now, in the past eleven years, we have seen a rise in the number of medical students. However, the increase in the number of doctors only rose very slowly. Now, although there was an increase in the past, but then in twenty twenty and twenty-one wastage, now let's disregard retirement. Four hundred and forty-two doctors left service. Well, this is only partly offset by medical graduates. Still, we have a net loss. You have to bear in mind that doctors wasted that have left service, I mean experienced doctors. So we have to monitor the situation of HA. Now, there was immigration and also doctors who left to take care of families. Has there anything got to do with the governance of HA? Because you can't even ensure a safe and secure environment for your staff. How can you persuade your staff to remain there service with HA? And then the working situation is not very good, even for patients waiting for an appointment. Now, the waiting time has gone longer and longer. We have been increasing resources to the HA year after year to deal with the manpower situation, but the situation is far from desirable. So, as mentioned, in the secretary's opening, there are two ten-year hospital development plans. And as we said, there are old hospitals that should be redeveloped. For instance, the Wong Tai Shin Hospital.
Thank you very much. The questions includes the shortage of manpower, working environments, and also the governance of the HA. For example, the waiting time for GOPC. Now, for these questions, the Health Bureau has been working together with the hospital authority and meets regularly to review the indicators. In a monthly meeting, we would discuss with the HA concerning the number of people hired and also the attrition rate. There is an established mechanism to review the situation with the HA every month, and we require submission of data or indicators by the HA. Especially for manpower, the HA is recruiting non-locally graduated medical students from overseas, and they need to give us the results. On other performance indicators, for example, waiting time for SOPC. In the annual work plan, we would review the targets with them. For example, for SOPC, we want to reduce the waiting time by twenty percent from the previous level. So we are going to follow up on the performance of the HA very seriously. So besides attrition of frontline doctors, there is also an attrition at the management level. On the first and second ten-years hospital development plan, now we are approaching the end of the first ten-year hospital development plan. For the second one, it includes hospital clusters in the northern metropolis and the older districts. Like Ms. Chen said, we would review whether we have to expand existing hospitals or build new hospitals in older districts. I believe that in the next annual work plan, there will be more details and also more updates on the second ten-year hospital development plan. I have a follow-up question. Every year, we are allocating more resources to the HA. However, the baskets of problems have not been resolved. The governance problem isn't something new. So we really have to tackle the problem head-on. Under Secretary, I understand Ms. Rebecca Chen's concern. You are right, every year more and more resources are allocated to the hospital authority because of the aging population and other factors. And also with the with more resources allocated, we want the HA to improve their performance. So we will work with the HA to help them improve their governance holistically. Mr. Rodick Chen, thank you. Zero one two and one three seven. Now on question zero one two about the centralized organ donation register. Since year two thousand and nineteen, the number of registrations made has reduced from twenty thousand people to twelve thousand five hundred people last year. And there are more and more people canceling the registration every year. What is the reason? Now for cornea, it is an organ which more people are willing to donate. However, even for cornea, more people are canceling the registration. Now, the government has been publicizing the idea of organ donation through APIs and also publicity campaigns. Now, having analyzed the reasons behind the decline, are there targeted publicity campaigns to boost the number of registration on the centralized organ donation register? And whether more resources will be allocated for that purpose? Now, one three seven subsidy for patients of rare diseases. Now, since year two thousand and eighteen, there is a program under the Community Care Fund that is a subsidy to support patients with rare disease to buy ultra-expensive medicine. Now, there are nine types of, there are nine medicines with one hundred and eighty-six successful applications. Now, the number one hundred and eighty-six is the number accumulated over years. So how many cases were not approved? And for applications, for failed applications, will there be another chance given to the patients? Now, there is a database for rare diseases. There are thirty diseases on the database so far, yet the target is one hundred and twenty-one. It requires systematic work for that. So how many years do you expect you need to reach the goal? Under Secretary, for organ donation, I would defer to Mr. Chen and HA for the other question. Thank you very much. Over the past few years, because of the epidemic, the number of organ transplants and publicity campaign on organ donation have been affected. True, the number of organ transplants performed and also organs donated have decreased. Now, we have resumed normal normalcy. So in terms of publicity campaign on registering on the central centralized organ donation register, and we will do better. Now, we encourage members of the public who would like to donate the organs to register on the registered. More importantly, this will let the family members know about their wish. Now, when family members and healthcare workers know about your wish, the success rate would be much higher. About rare disease, well, you can see that these are very rare diseases. So naturally, the number of applications would be lower. On application, doctors would study whether the medicine is suitable for the patients. At different stages of the illness, different medication would be needed to treat the indications. And also there is a vetting procedure under the CCF. So time is needed to complete the vetting procedures. But usually, the applications would be successful. And also, for some medicines, because of lack of scientific proof, we cannot prove that the medication is suitable for a certain stage of the disease. Now, with better scientific evidence, the medicine can be safely used on more cases. Now, about database, we will strive to complete the database within two years. We have large amounts of data. And the database also covers common disease of pediatric patients. Now, about the success rate of applications for subsidy for rare diseases, what is the success rate? The success rate is very high because usually we they would be successful. Mr. Adrian Ho, thank you. Zero seven three and zero six six. Zero seven three, it is my own question. I want to know the total expenditure on primary healthcare and public health. Now, for year two thousand and twenty-one and twenty-two and also twenty-two to twenty-three, what is the total expenditure? And also, after the establishment of the Primary Healthcare Commission, how much resources would be dedicated to it? And what is the timetable? Now, sixty-six, Mr. Holden Chow's question. Now, it has been four years since the voluntary health insurance scheme has been implemented. And we have heard lots of news about a fee increase of insurance products. So does that affect the willingness of the public to take out insurance policy? If that's the case, will there be incentive measures? Say, for example, tax rebate to enhance the incentive? Now, according to the reply, one person can be holder, can be a holder of more than one health insurance policies. As a result, we don't have a very accurate data on the number of policy holders. Now, can there be more accurate data surveyed so that we can have a more targeted approach of publicity? Thank you. Under Secretary, thank you, Mr. Ho. Now, about the expenditure on public healthcare, two thousand and twenty-two and twenty-three. Now, that is under the heading Public Expenditure on Healthcare System. As yet, we don't have the figure. Still, the ratio is about twenty percent among the total expenditure, a similar level compared with previous years. Now, the concerning the Primary Healthcare Commission, we will have the Primary Healthcare Commission established by year two thousand and twenty-four. Now, the preliminary work are being undertaken by the Primary Healthcare Office. Chairman, concerning the VHIS, since it was implemented in year two thousand and nineteen April, we have been monitoring the increase in the number of products. There is a trend of increase in the number of products. Still, because of the pandemic, the growth has slowed down. Now, we are monitoring the number every month concerning the coverage of voluntary health insurance products. Together with the insurance, insurance industry, we are monitoring whether the terms and conditions of the VHI, VHI products are can meet the need of the public. Concerning the increase of policy premium, to a large extent, it reflects the increase in the cost of medical healthcare. The Health Bureau is conducting a study on how we can better survey the price of medical care charged by the public and private healthcare system, whether they were paid for by the, through the voluntary health insurance schemes. Now, on VHIS, it is our goal to regulate and standardize VHI products. Now, you said some members of the public may purchase more than one policies. So besides the basic plan, some people would opt for top-up plans as well. So now we are trying to work it out with the industry to have a more complete sets of data concerning the number of policies taken out. Mr. Scotsland, thank you, Chairman. HB one five four on Chinese medicine community clinics. Now, after the pandemic, there has been an ever higher demand for Chinese medicine services. Now, according to the reply, the attendance for Chinese medicine clinics over the territory has increased by eighteen percent over a year's time. Now, I would, I'm more interested in the Kowloon West, Yau Ching-Mong, and Shamshibo districts. They are higher than the average level over the territory. That means more residents in these districts are seeking help from Chinese medicine practitioners. Now, many people said that's the phone lines which do not go through, and they can't even make a booking through the eighteen CM clinics mobile app. Just this morning, I was helping my constituents to make a booking. Now, to make a booking. Now new bookings were made available since nine A M. At nine zero six, all bookings for acupuncture, obstetrics and so on and medicine were fully booked. For Shangshibo, the bookings were full at nine zero five. So it just take a few minutes to be fully booked. So can we enhance the capacity and also there are two parts of subsidies. One is subsidized G O P C or outpatient outpatient service for um Chinese medicine pat- uh patients and also opposed recovery and recovery from Covid. Now concerning the booking places for Covid for Covid recovered patients about the age of sixty-five, we still have remaining quotas. So so can you claw back some of these quota places to the medicine departments? To alleviate the pressure on the general services subsidized by the government? Thank you.
Secretary, thank you. Uh regarding the uh mobile app for uh C M clinics, I would defer to the uh H A S for uh whether we can uh reallocate the quota for government subsidized services and uh post-Covid uh treatment. Now uh the model is are different because of for Covid covered recovered patients. Uh we include uh five uh follow-up visits. Now as for the quota allocation, we'll see whether we can improve the current arrangement. I defer to the H A for the uh booking system, Doctor Qu. Yes, as mentioned, we have got um mobile app for making bookings. But then uh Mister Leng is very correct, we need quotas available before we can have bookings. So we have greatly increased the uh number of quota from six hundred thousand to eight hundred thousand. That is quite substantial. Hopefully, within this year, we can uh really boost our service to that quota. And by then, I think it will be easier for members of the public to book an appointment. I understand that there is a great demand for C M services. We will closely monitor the situation where uh needed, we will uh further redeploy resources. Now for a Covid recovered patients, uh the treatment protocol is a bit different. We want to deploy our resources more flexibly so that more can uh be treated at our clinics. Still, there are uh constraints. We'll closely monitor the situation. Any follow-up? Uh no, then Mister Stanley Lee, thank you.
I'd like to follow up on H H B O O two and also uh the uh opening remarks by the secretary. Now, H B O O two is about dental services for our elderly. We do understand that manpower is tight in this area. We understand that the administration is increasing the number of training places. But in the short term, you cannot fulfill the demand from the elderly. There is subsidy from various funds, but we have been discussing with the administration whether you can triage some of our elderly persons to uh quality hospitals in the mainland. Can sub- subsidy be provided? Now let me give you an example, just at Easter, because uh many dental clinics were closed in Hong Kong, I've got an elderly friend who went to dental treatment in the mainland. The root canal treatment cost him about two thousand dollars. I myself have uh tried to identify such services in Hong Kong and I spent a thousand dollars on root canal treatment. So can the administration consider triaging some of our elderly dental needs to the mainland so that the money follows our patients? And in the opening speech, I heard from the acting secretary that the elderly healthcare voucher scheme will be reviewed this year. We have been asking for the use of elderly healthcare vouchers in the in all places in G B A. Right now, such vouchers can only be used in the Shenzhen Hospital. In fact, there are a few other rather outstanding hospitals in G B A. Now we have a s- strong demand for elderly services. We don't have enough residential care services. And some elderly persons would like to retire in the mainland to be close to their relatives. But then the healthcare voucher scheme is a limitation. Now if we allow vouchers to be spent outside Hong Kong in the G B A area, that would be of a of great help. What is the administration's response on that? Thank you. We understand that there is a great demand for dental services from the elderly. Indeed, we have a shortage of manpower. If we expand elderly dental services to a large extent, then we do have difficulties. Now, our elders can use their healthcare vouchers to see dentists in Hong Kong. So uh they can use uh the uh vouchers for dental treatment. Uh whether the vouchers can be used outside Hong Kong? And if we have elders residing outside Hong Kong, can they use the vouchers to procure a service there? Now uh we provide these vouchers for outpatient and not hospitalized services. Now if uh in the mainland, we have quality healthcare facilities, we'll consider what the vouchers can be used in some healthcare facilities in the G B A. We will cover this aspect in our review. We also like to see whether our elderly healthcare vouchers can be used for procuring services in the mainland. Can they use the vouchers for paying part of the insurance premium there? Well, we will cover that in our review as well. Any follow-up from Mister Lee?
I'd like to follow up on dental services for the elderly. Now for the Community Care Fund, you have set aside an amount to subsidize our elderly persons. Now if you allow part of the um subsidies to be spent in the mainland, that will be very efficient because the price differential is two thousand and eight thousand dollars. Now if you relax the criteria, then more elderly persons can have access to such services although it is outside Hong Kong. So I'm saying that in the short and medium term, you can put in this interim measure. When we have sufficient service capacity in Hong Kong, then our elderly persons can come back to Hong Kong. Well, for the G B A, I don't think it should be on a short-term basis. It can be implemented long-term. Doctor Lee, yes, we'll consider this because uh the subsidy under C C F is not the elderly healthcare voucher scheme. It is a separate issue. Miss Sun Li Tong Kwok, I'd like to follow up on question oh eight seven. Now I am concerned about the use of technology in medical services for our elderly because uh this can reduce the time, the waiting time of our elderly persons at G O P Cs. If they use telehealth services, then uh we can also alleviate the pressure on our A N E and G O P C and our elders don't have to travel to O P C anymore. The Community Geriatric Assessment Team in between April and uh December last year provided forty-seven thousand um service sessions and the uh service has been extended to all residential care homes in Hong Kong. Now Covid nineteen is behind us. Will the administration consider to increase the number of attendances available under the C G A Ts because prior to April twenty twenty-two, there was no statistics kept? Now, I'd like to know whether you will revert to your previous practice and that is uh not keeping such statistics because uh such statistics is most useful for us to monitor the development of telehealth services. Now, in the reply, it is said that in April twenty twenty-two onwards, the services have been expanded extended to all residential care homes in Hong Kong. After Covid nineteen, will the um H A reduce the amount of services for R C H Es? Earlier on, I asked an oral question in a council meeting. Years ago, a working group was set up to monitor the development of telehealth services. But there is no mention of the work of the working group in this reply. I'd like to know the progress of work of the working group and whether there is any timetable for putting forward improvement recommendations. Doctor Ko.
Thank you. As mentioned by Miss Sun Li, we have seen rapid development in telehealth services and we can see the merits of this model. For instance, in R C H Es, we have more than a decade of history in telehealth services. Back then, technology was not that mature. We started with telephone calls and then uh we could use uh videos. But then uh the technology was not that advanced. And during Covid nineteen, for the purpose of infection control and because it was not so convenient for elders to uh come to clinics for follow-up, we applied telehealth services extensively with enthusiastic response from both residents and staff of our elderly homes. We are going to compile relevant statistics. We will keep these statistics for provision to the council in the future. We will not just maintain the current level of telehealth services. We will continue to develop this service in R C H Es, so uh we will broaden our coverage and strengthen our services. Internally, the H A has set up a task force on the development of telehealth services. So we do not just provide medical consultation, uh there can be nurse clinics and also our consultations with our pharmacies. We will report our progress to the task force on a regular basis. Any follow-up Mister Li? Can you give us some specific targets? For instance, in the coming twelve months, how much do you expect to cover? Because it's a really difficult for elders to attend an A N E department. There is hardship to our medical staff as well as the residential care homes. If you do not have such information, you can give a written reply later. Thank you. Mister Chan Kim Paul, uh my question relates to O O sixteen. Uh that is the amount of V I H S products. As at last year, there were one point one three such policies procured. Only twelve thousand five hundred such policies for those over sixty. But in fact, we have a population of two point nineteen million uh eligible or in this age group, so the percentage is only five point seven percent. This is because an elderly person is bound to have pre-existing conditions. And uh the premium is usually high because of their health conditions and so this age bracket is not willing to take out medical insurances. Now there was the concept of a high-risk pool. So the governments can uh top up part of the insurance premium so that those who need such products will be able to procure insurance. Five billion dollars was reserved for this high-risk pool, but then the money has been channeled to other users. Will the government reconsider this option and whether the government has consulted stakeholders? Thank you.
Under secretary, permanent secretary please. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you Mister Chan for your questions. Concerning V H I S policies, Mister Chan is right. At present, the policyholders are mostly people of a younger age. That is also one of our intentions when we devised of the measure. The idea is to offer medical insurance to young people since a young age so that they are covered by insurance to get medical health care services from the private sector. Now, the V H I S has only been implemented for a few years' time. And also we have experienced a few years of epidemic, which doubts a blow to the private healthcare sector. The situation was extraordinary, so we need more time to monitor the efficacy and the operation of the V H I S as a whole before we conduct a review. So in reviewing the efficacy of the V H I S, we would look at the design of the program and identify elements worth improving. Now concerning the high-risk pool mentioned by Mister Chan, in the past, the government has set aside resources for the establishment of the high-risk pool. However, during the consultation process for V H I S, there were diverging views in the public, whether we should use public money to top up the protection on top of the safety nets offered by the public healthcare sector. No consensus was reached. As a result, the high-risk pool was not implemented. Still, we will monitor the situation at in the private healthcare sector and consider the idea if necessary. Now, actually, you are not subsidizing, you are not topping up the plan for the high-risk groups. You are just helping them because they still have to pay their own premium. You only have to pay for the top-up parts of their policies. There is always room to consider the amount of top-up support for them. Now the cost for medical service for the high-risk group is very high. So if you can give up, if you can give them more better insurance, then they can get the services they need outside of the public healthcare system and it would be good for the governments in the end. So maybe you can only pay for half of the top-up price and then the waiting time can be curtailed. So you have to consider the matter holistically. Permanent secretary, thank you Mister Chan for your suggestion. When we review the V H I S in the future, we will consider it. Now we look at the capacity of the public healthcare system or the uh the the healthcare system as a whole. So the idea is whether the V H I S can take away some burden from the public healthcare system. That's our original goal. I personally think that this is something that you definitely have to achieve, so please consider the suggestion. Thank you. Mister Professor Chan Wing Kong, thank you. I would like to follow up on my question. H H B zero three one, the eighteen districts Chinese medicine clinics come teaching and research center. Now, Chinese medicine service is highly demanded by the public, especially after the pandemic because it has highlighted the efficacy of Chinese medicine services for recovered patients. However, according to the However, according to the reply in the C M C T Rs. Only five hundred, four hundred forty-one, four hundred fifteen and four hundred nineteen Chinese medicine practitioners were hired over the past few years. So, on average, only twenty Chinese medicine practitioners are serving one clinic. Now, even if they work tirelessly, it is it still falls much short of the actual demand. So will the bureau? Allocate more resources to hire way more Chinese medicine practitioners to increase the surface quotas of each. C M C T Rs, so that the public can get quality Chinese medicine service at a reasonable price. Now, in two thousand twenty-one and twenty-two. The total number of Chinese medicine practitioners hired over the eighteen districts have reduced by twenty compared with the level as two thousand twenty. So have you considered the reason for that? Now, these practitioners are hired by the NGOs running the C M C T Rs. So the terms and conditions and the remuneration package would be designed by the NGOs. But we all know that the attraction offered by the package is very low. The starting salary is in the range of twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-seven thousand. Ten percent slower than registered nurses. Now, for doctors hired by the public hospitals, their salary, the starting salary is seventy thousand dollars. The gap is very huge. It is unfair to Chinese medicine practitioners and it. Cannot retain their service. So will the government? Device a reasonable pay scale for Chinese medicine practitioners so that they would be encouraged to stay and serve the public? Now, the special medicine, Chinese medicine service offered by the. Outpatient clinic is very popular. There were some forty-three thousand attendants over the past year. However, many people complain about the difficulty to get a slot. It highlights the huge demand for this service. So will the government consider allocating more resources to increase the quota, number of quota places? For special C M outpatient program or. Enhance the capacity of the service through public-private partnership. Now, the D A B has conducted a survey on C M. More than half of the respondents told us that they were not aware of the Chinese medicine. Clinic services in all eighteen districts. So have the, so has the government publicized, has the government done enough to? Publicize the service offered by the C M C T R? That members of the public can get quality service with a reasonable price? Professor Chen, your question was very long. Under secretary, thank you. The question covered how we can better attract Chinese medicine practitioners, whether there would be an increase of quota places as the clinics. And also whether. Members of the public. Are aware of the C M C T Rs. Now, I will answer. Some of the questions about the number of attrition. Well, maybe one of the factor is the relatively unattractive remuneration package. Now, we have the healthcare development blueprint. On Chinese medicine. So we will work closely with the Chinese medicine industry to improve the remuneration package for Chinese medicine practitioners and increase manpower. In terms of the number of quota places for Chinese medicine services, there are many channels through which. Members of the public can get Chinese medicine services. Now, we are increasing the quota places to eight hundred thousand next year, this year. And also, people can, members of the public can use healthcare vouchers to. Obtain Chinese medicine services on publicity, Mr. Cole. Thank you, Chairman. We have been publicizing the services of the eighteen C M C T Rs through different channels. Now. We are aware of the high demand for the service. The quota places would be used up very promptly, so we will try to offer more service slots. Now, under the epidemic, besides traditional Western medicine services, we have Chinese medicine. Services for um COVID patients at our G O P C. And also the um integrated wellness clinics. And also, we have a dedicated hotline. To help COVID patients secure a quota place. Now, we will be increasing the number of quota places by two hundred thousand and we will. Publicize the outside as more. Now, members, please allow more time for the official to answer you, thank you. That would be fairer. Mister Charles Su Chong, after that, I will draw a line because of time. Mister Charles Su Chong, thank you, Chairman. I would like to follow up on Mister Ben Chan's question. Number zero four, zero zero four, about the. Number of. Post-graduate dentistry places. Or dental therapist. Now, we saw many people queuing for. Dentistry service overnight on the streets and the. Image was saddening. Now, can we extend the coverage of dental hygienist? To students? And can we increase the number of undergraduate places for dental therapists? So that we can offer more dentistry services to members of the public through our public sector. And also, this will help fulfill the pledge for dental care for civil servants. Now, for dental therapists, there are only ten. Places for undergraduates. Now, I believe that a few years ago, there were twenty or even thirty undergraduate places for dental therapists. So my first question is whether you would extend the scope of service for dental therapists to adults beyond students? And also increase the number of um undergraduate places. Now, my own question. H B zero five three. Deferring retirements as a measure to retain talents in the hospital authority. Now, there are post-retirement. Service contracts. Offered by the H A, but I think the number can be higher. Now, for professional medical. Professionals, only twenty percent would choose to stay on after retirement. For supplementary staff, the percentage is just about fifty percent. I believe there is much more room. Of improvement. So what will the H A do to entice? Medical staff at retirement age to serve beyond the age of sixty-five? Thank you. The permanent secretary and Mister Cole. Thank you very much. By the end of last year, we have established the dental hygiene and care. Uh working group, working group on oral health and dental care. The purpose of the group is to enhance the. Strategy of dental care and oral health. Now, we would devise age group-specific strategy. And tie in with the primary healthcare development blueprints to enhance the coverage of dental healthcare. And we also look at the need of underprivileged groups. But both requires. Sufficient dental manpower. So concerning the need for dental healthcare, we would enhance training for. Dentists and also dental therapists. We will increase the number of. Undergraduate places. Appropriately, and we, when we amend the dental registration ordinance, we will incorporate these ideas so that. The bill can be introduced to Lashco later on this year, Mister Cole.
Thank you. Well, with regard to Mister Charles' question, and that is post-retirement employment, we do set a lot of store by that. And I think we are beginning to yield results. Now, for doctors, for the coming five years from twenty twenty-three onwards, for all colleagues that are about to retire. We have approached them, trying to understand their retirement plans. About eighty percent of them have indicated the interest for post-retirement employment. So we will continue to work on this, thank you. Any follow-up? Uh Doctor So Chang Wing. Chair. I'm concerned about the coordination and support for uh. Primary healthcare. So my question relates to a reply number one eight three. And uh that is, there will at least be six. Full-day services in uh D H Cs. But we must improve the range of services provided by D H Cs. Now, for D H C expresses. They will gradually be turned to D H Cs. I'd like to know the concrete timetable and plan for this transition. And I'd like to know the extra amount of resources to be deployed for this purpose. Many members of the public are not aware whether uh there is a D H C or D H C Express in the neighborhood. And they lack knowledge of the services available at D H Cs. So will resources be deployed to publicize? D H C expresses and D H Cs to make them more effective? Another reply. Number one eight five. Now, according to the. Reply. Although we see a year-on-year increase in the return of public-private partnership endowment fund. However, the expenses. Has um. Exceeded the return. Now, I believe the out, the expenses will continue to grow. So is there any? Measures to ensure that the PPP endowment fund can. Be healthy and sustainable and effective? Thank you. Thank you, Doctor So, for your questions. I defer to Mister Pang for the operation of D H Cs. Doctor Pang, thank you, Chair. D H Cs and D H C expresses. Now, we have a full timetable for the transition. Now, thirteen of them are now D H Cs and the remaining four has got funding approval from the council last year. We have identified locations for three to four of them. We now know the permanent locations of three to four D H Cs. For the detailed plan, we can give a supplementary reply after the meeting. The last D H C only started its service in December twenty twenty-two. So I understand that it takes time to publicize the services of D H Cs. Uh we need the public to understand uh the basic information about primary healthcare. We are promoting. The existence of D H Cs to members of the public. We are going to launch the chronic disease co-care policy very soon. But then. We will then uh work on the. Collaboration between family doctors and D H Cs. Hopefully, they can also be interfaced with the current healthcare system. Will continue to put in resources to enhance people's understanding of uh D H Cs and also services available there. That is about the D H Cs and then the PPP endowment fund. Thank you. In the past few years, because of COVID nineteen, we spent a large amount of the fund uh for PPP private. Public-private partnership. We believe um expenses from the fund will reduce and will also review the financial situation of the fund. And we will review our experience to see what services are suitable for PPP to lessen the burden on public healthcare. Now, we have started a strategic procurement office. The office will review the current operation of PPP and where resources can be deployed to particular services to provide better services to the public and to lessen the burden on our public healthcare sector. Doctor Ten Yuhang. Thank you. I'd like to follow up on a question by Mister Professor Chen Winkong. And the first is um reply oh three one. And that is the number of C M practitioners employed by our. Uh. By our um C M T R Cs now. Now, for these clinics, I'd like to know their current mode of operation. Can they uh satisfy demand from the respective districts? And the second question is H H B oh seven three. And that is to have a blueprint for C M services. Now, I understand that uh commissioner for C M will be created. And then the commissioner will be responsible for further development of C M. I'd like to know the timeframe. I'd like to know uh when the uh recommendations of the blueprint for C M development can be uh implemented. Now, we have a blueprint for youth development and a blueprint for healthcare, primary healthcare. Now. Many provinces and municipalities have visited Hong Kong recently uh to seek cooperation with Hong Kong with also. Delegations from the C M sector. I'm grateful to uh these uh to Gangsu. Province for the delegation to Hong Kong now. I'd like to know whether uh these uh. Exchanges can um lead to concrete measures for implementation and cooperation. Thank you. Doctor Lee, we attach a lot of importance to the development of C M, which has an important role, important role to play in our healthcare system. I defer to Doctor Lee. To answer these questions.
Thank you. Yes, as said by Doctor Lee, C M is an important part of our healthcare system. As for the timeframe for C M development, we are now seeking support from the council for creation of the post of commissioner for C M development. Uh the paper is waiting to be examined at the establishment subcommittee. If things goes smoothly, hopefully, we can start recruitment in the middle of next year. The commissioner will discuss with the sector to come up with a blueprint. We need a rather comprehensive discussion with stakeholders in the C M sector. I think the draft blueprint. We have to wait until discussion between. we have to wait until discussion between the commissioner and the sector. But of course, we're also eager to have it ready as soon as possible. As for exchanges with the CM sector in the mainland, different CM authorities of mainland provinces and municipalities have great support for development of CM in Hong Kong because we do have our inherent advantages. Now, we have um collaboration ideas on manpower training and uh formation of standards and also a facilitation measures for marketing, et cetera. Dr. Ten. Now, thank you for the blueprint. Now, it was proposed in the policy address. I hope uh we won't have to wait until we're halfway through the current uh policy address period before the blueprint can be available. Yes, please. Make haste. Mr. Lam Chan Sing. Well, because after you've drawn the line, I can't see the speaking order. I dare not leave the room. Well, I will have to ask the secretary now is Mr. Lam Chan Sing to be followed by Mr. Lan Ching Yi, Mr. Tang Cabil, Mr. Chow Man Kwong, Mr. uh Michael Tian, Mr. Chow Man Kwong, Miss Lillian Kwok and Mr. Chairman Kwong. Chairman Kwong. So you have uh three more members to wait. All right. Mr. Lam Chan Sing, I'd like to follow up on my own question. HHB oh eight nine. I think many members have asked about uh the CMCTRs. Uh, the number of attendances reached a record high, one point five million last year. Of course, uh, the situation was a special last year because the government provided ten free consultations for COVID-recovered patients. And so the attendance has reached a record high, but we can envisage that uh this will remain on the high side because people now like CM services. I'm worried that if we don't have enough CM practitioner, we may affect the waiting time of uh the eighteen CMCTRs. And uh that involves training of um new blood. And I understand that there has been a reduction in the number of training quotas for CM practitioners. This is rather awkward because we are going to have a Chinese medicine hospital. We have subsidized the CM services. How come the training quota has been cut? I think you have to revisit this point to ensure we have sufficient CM practitioners. Now, for the number of attendances in the eastern district, it was over a hundred thousand last year. We're talking about one single district. So can we consider setting up one more clinic, given the high demand for services? And then there is also the pilot scheme on integrated Chinese-Western medicine treatment. Over three thousand people participated. So what is your assessment? Is it true that after integrated Western Chinese medicine treatment, the three thousand odd patients improved? Now, I know you're only dealing with stroke patients, cancer, relief, et cetera. Now, if the effect is desirable, can you widen the scope of the pilot scheme? Uh, my question, my next question is oh nine oh about outpatient psychiatric clinics. Uh, PPP started last year in Kowloon East. Can you extend it to other districts as well?
Permanent Secretary. Thank you. Now, I would take the question on Chinese medicine practitioners manpower. Now, we have more than ten thousand Chinese medicine practitioners in Hong Kong. All along through our manpower, healthcare manpower projection, we have been monitoring the future demand for manpower and decide the number of training places. Now, this will be tied in with our service expansion blueprint. Before we had the blueprint, according to our healthcare manpower projection, the existing level of manpower should be sufficient for the future demand. However, with the CM developments blueprint, there will be higher demand for CM service. Then we will suitably adjust the number of training places upward. Now, the CMCTRs run by the government only accounts for a small percentage of the Chinese medicine sector in Hong Kong. The majority of the service is provided by the private sector. And we are subsidizing this service through Chinese medicine healthcare voucher. Now, it is the, it ranks the second in terms of the number of applications received. Under secretary, under secretary, now I would invite Dr. Cole to take the question on integrated Chinese and Western medicine service. Thank you. This is one of the areas which we attach a lot of importance to. Ten years ago, we started implementing integrated Chinese and medicine, Chinese and Western medicine uh programs on stroke patients. The results have been satisfactory. So we would promote this kind of services through regularizing these programs. Now, recently, we have also launched new programs to help patients with multidisciplinary needs. Through primary healthcare system, they can get their physical and psychiatric needs tended to. Now, if that's the case, if the program proves success, proves to be successful, we would extend the programs to more GOPC. Thank you. Miss, uh, Dr. David Lam. Now, question one zero three and one zero eight about the chronic disease co-care pilot scheme and also early screening. Now, we agree with the general direction of primary healthcare developments. Now, diabetes, hypertension and also um optometry, these are very the, these can have very serious consequences, for example, blindness or liver failure and so on. Now, the point is we have to focus on preventive care. That is prevent, prevention of disease before early onset and before they deteriorate. So does the government have a plan to implement a territory-wide evidence-based screening program for everyone in Hong Kong? This is not something new. We have the colon rectal screening program and also a tooth decay uh screening for students. Now, for blood sugar level and BMI, will you offer free screening for the public? Because this would be a great incentive for them if it's free of charge. With early screening, we can reduce the burden on medical healthcare drastically in the long run and also ensure help for the public. Without early screening, these risky, these risk groups, these people in the risk groups may become may need care. Now, maybe we can make reference to the US Preventive Service Task Force in rolling out free-of-charge universal screening for the population in Hong Kong. Under secretary. Now, the FH, the Departments of Health has a task force to conduct research on evidence-based screening for the territory. As a result, we have the colorectal screening service. Now, for lipodermia and also diabetes, we also have early screening for that. I would invite the commissioner to talk about that. Thank you very much. Now, the chronic disease co-care pilot scheme is still in the stage of formulation. Now, like Dr. Lam said, we would put a focus on affordability of the public. And also, we also need support system like um the information technology system and also the one doctor, one family program and also the consolidation of our primary healthcare system. If everything goes smoothly, we will be able to give you more details by the end of this year. In terms of fees, we would follow the established principle and release more data in the future. That's all I can tell you for now. Thank you. Follow up, please. Now, the chronic disease co-care pilot scheme, it will come with a fifty percent subsidy. Now, by that stage, the members of the public would be sick already. Now, on the other hand, early screening only costs ten dollars for diabetes or blood sugar. For BMI, you only need the weight, it costs nothing. Now, every two years, you only need to spend three to four hundred dollars. And then at latest, um, when you get older, you don't need to get elderly healthcare voucher. It would be less costly for the public. So I think these are just empty talks you were giving us. Thank you. Now, we have some screening programs for free. For example, blood pressure, you can simply walk in and get your blood pressure measured. And also free of charge medical or health advice offered by the clinics. Now, for blood sugar and um lipodermia, we only target high-risk groups. If you are thirty years old, you don't need it. So when you get to forty years old, you are more risky, so you will get screening. We understand where the doctor was coming from. The cheaper it is, the more popular it will be. So we know that. We will pub, we will announce details in the third quarter this year. Thank you. Let's be patient. Mr. Chow Man Kwong, thank you very much. Question ninety-one and two four seven. Ninety-one, the need of children with special educational needs, send students. Now, I submitted a question to the Education Bureau. There are seventy-five thousand sent students in secondary and primary schools. Now, in the public education system, there are some ten thousand one hundred fifty-four sent students. Some fourteen thousand two hundred fifty-one sent students are given assessment services. Now, those students actually receiving follow-up services in the public system are a minority. And also the waiting time is very long. They need to wait for a year and they get ten minutes in terms of assessments. So there is a huge gap between demand and supply. Now, we all know that the golden age of treatment is zero to six years old. There is definitely a delay of treatment we are seeing here. So will the governments use the public money more wisely and make reference to the elderly healthcare voucher scheme and roll out students' healthcare voucher scheme? Since the public healthcare system is overburdened, will you ask for help from the private sector? Now, about elderly healthcare voucher, Ms. Rebecca Chan has asked a very valid question about the number of complaints received. There are substantiated cases. However, only one service provider was removed from the register. So are there mechanisms for referral to police for follow-up? Now, there are so many cases substantiated, but only one service provider has been punished. It is unfair. Now, I have received complaints as well. When other people are seeking dental help or dental services from a dentistry, the doctors gave them the most expensive package and after they have used up their healthcare vouchers, they are, they were asked to pay from their own pockets. So will that be a more robust system to monitor the performance of service providers? Dr. Chan, please. Thank you. Concerning physical and psychological assessment for students, we offer screening and there would be referrals. Now, because of the pandemic, the number of students served has reduced. And also many parents had concerns over social distancing, so they were more reluctant to come to our clinics. Since the epidemic has eased, the number has risen again. And also for more urgent cases, we were able to complete assessments for them in the first three weeks. Ninety percent have, ninety percent of the students have been given an assessment in the first three weeks. And also, we have a serious brain drain in the healthcare sector. So we want to hire more people in the future. Now, services for sent students require multidisciplinary help. I'm talking about sent students and also students with mental incapabilities. So we want to move the assessments earlier on to give the students timely treatments and help. In terms of elderly healthcare voucher scheme, we are focusing on a few areas on inspections. We have proactive investigations and also regular inspections. Or eligible service providers would be required to undergo inspections. And also for complaints, we also conduct targeted inspections. For complaints received, we will also carry out investigation on a risk-based model. Now, between two thousand nine and two thousand twenty-two, more than five hundred and sixty thousand transactions were being in, have been inspected, accounting for one point five percent of the total number of inspections. More than eight thousand five hundred cases were found to be problematic. For follow-up me, for follow-up measures, we issued warning letters or even revocation of the registration. Now, for inappropriate record or unscripted practice or even scams, the cases would be referred to the relevant authorities for disciplinary actions. So far, the system has been running smoothly, but we would also like to appeal to the public. For any complaints, please don't hesitate to approach us. We will definitely follow them up. Mister Bu Tang, thank you. Now, a policy question. I agree that primary healthcare is very important. The most important thing about this is whether members of the public can ensure help by seeking help from assistive professionals. Now, the last term of the government's mention about a reform on the scope of service offered by physiotherapists. That is, even without referrals made by doctors, members of the public can seek professional services from physiotherapists directly. Now, this reform is nowhere Now, this reform is nowhere to be seen. Even without the reform, there are many people seeking help from questionable service providers for pain relief and so on. Now, a member said here a few days ago that there wa- there are lots of account, so-called accountants without a certificate offering similar services. So say the same goes for physiotherapists. The reform has been put on the table more than a year ago. So will, will it happen? I don't want people wasting their money and also it is a very useful service. Now, about some Chinese medicine or medicine registered in the mainland for use in Hong Kong, I'm grateful that the government has adjusted the system so that medicines registered under the National Administration of Medicine in the country can be used in Hong Kong. They are one of the some thirty places in our, on our list. So are there any medicines um registered in Hong Kong through this program?
Miss Li, Doctor Li, well, I will um talk about uh her allied health professions. Now, for referrals uh require, refer requirement for physiotherapists, now our position is to ensure safety and to local risk and uh to minimize the risk of delayed treatment. So we maintain an open mind. Now, although uh we um can do away with referrals for uh P T services, that doesn't mean that there won't be any assessment. We maintain an open mind and we understand that the industry is concerning this and we will um report to the council our progress on the proposed legislation. And as for medicine manufactured in the mainland for use in Hong Kong, uh I refer to uh Doctor Tang. Now, for uh drugs approved by the Drug Administration of the mainland is not included in our list. So there are thirty places under the Level Two surveillance available for registration in Hong Kong. We have uh seven, uh fourteen thousand seven hundred and four registered pharmaceutical products in Hong Kong. During twenty eighteen to uh last year, four oh three of them are newly registered. Now, since we introduced the measure that mainland manufactured drugs can be used in Hong Kong now, that include uh vaccines for COVID manufactured by Sinovac. So for drugs urgently required for public health, now so long as uh there is approval by designated places and if it is confirmed to be urgently needed by experts, such drugs can apply for registration, urgent registration in Hong Kong. Uh whether we have other drugs apart from uh Sinovac, I can give a supplementary reply later. I'm not too optimistic about this. I think the number is zero, but of course, I look forward to a reply from you. Next, Mister Michael Tian, thank you. Like to follow up on question number B O O five, O five five and two nine eight. Now, I have checked with uh friends, Doctor Friends working in public hospitals. Now, uh there is, this is my next sample. There is aluminum uh window frame and it has got a padlock and then it has uh come loose and then is only uh stuck together with sellotape. So for safety reason, uh my friend called the H A and then uh the problem was fixed within a couple of hours. So we have seen equipment coming loose in H A facilities. I don't think this is because of manpower shortage, rather, it has something to do with their governance culture. They are very passive. We have seen more close to thirty incidents, on average, two, one every two days. Now, we have seen incidents uh in O T and uh a lamp falling from above the head of a patient, and then the H A had to come out to apologize to the public. Perhaps from a governance perspective, they should consider how they can improve it. I think one possible solution is a performance-packed pay mechanism. Now, the same day next year, you should present a list of incidents. Now, if there is no improvement in the performance, uh safety performance, then I think we can do something to their pay adjustment. Now, I'm not talking about pay reduction even. Well, we have uh this similar system with the railway system. Now, you cannot fire your personnel, of course, because you have manpower shortage and you won't deduct or reduce their pay. Perhaps you can um reduce the level of pay increase. And another question is two nine eight. I'm very concerned about the cancer, liver cancer screening system. I discussed with the administration whether we can take reference from Japanese practice. I think they have a similar screening, but it's about hepatitis C. Now, finally, we see some Twilight here. Now, they have decided to carry out a risk-based approach. They are going to carry out hepatitis C screening, and I think people are quite pleased to hear about this. Can you tell us more and will you have a timetable for implementation? Thank you. Now, for management and accountability of H A, I defer to Doctor Ko. And for screening of uh viral hepatitis, I defer to the Department of Health. Doctor Ko, yes, we attach a lot of importance to the safety of our equipment. As said, we set up an expert committee to review the situation and see how we can enhance the safety of our equipment. I think there are a few directions. Now, we have contractors to carry out regular repair maintenance for our facilities. And there is this suggestion from the committee, we can deploy technology. In the past, relied on experienced people to um monitor, but technology may help in the future. Some of our facilities are dated. We have a few blocks over fifty years old. We have over a hundred blocks aged between thirty to fifty. So we may have to increase the frequency of inspection and maintenance. As mentioned by Mister Tian, the committee has advised us to consider the performance of contractors and uh people responsible. And uh there will be further recommendations on the roles to be played by these different parties. I hope you can ask them to consider uh performance uh packed pay increases. Thank you. We attach importance to uh the prevalence of uh liver cancer in Hong Kong. Now, we have set up a liver, I mean a cancer related expert group, and then there is particular tension for liver cancer. Now, for people with the medium level of risk and with no signs and symptoms, the expert group doesn't recommend a comprehensive screening for liver cancer. But then, we understand that eighty percent of uh liver cancer patients have suffered viral hepatitis in the past. So we have set up a steering committee on prevention and control of viral hepatitis. Having considered the data, it is suggested that for high-risk patients, they can uh carry out uh four core screening uh tests. Now, high-risk persons are those uh um men who have sex with men or sex workers or family members and sexual partners of people with H B P infection. Now, for clinics of the Department of Health, we are responsible for uh monitoring uh AIDS and also sexual-related diseases, et cetera. We've started such screening. All high-risk patients are coming for assistance will be screened. Now, the expert group doesn't recommend comprehensive screening uh because we have to use ultrasound or uh blood tests for the relevant uh protein. We do not recommend carrying out these tests to people with low risks. Thank you. Mister Tommy Zheng, like to refer to my question, H H B O sixty-two. Now, I'm not really going into the details of the reply, but uh just a number of um wastage of doctors within H A. The figures look rather pathetic. Uh in the first four months of this year, uh perhaps it's because those who wanted to leave have left. Uh the figure may not be that high. My question for the H A is, for a number of years, I've been saying that for doctors with limited registration, you always require them to uh know Cantonese. In the nineteen seventies, we had many Commonwealth doctors who did not know Cantonese, but every year, there were two hundred or so Commonwealth doctors coming to Hong Kong, and the situation remained for six to seven years. And as a result, the private hospitals did not have much business because services in public hospitals were much improved. Nowadays, our waiting lists of our public hospitals get longer and longer, and private hospitals have also got brisk business. Now, the H A wants to lure permanent residents back to Hong Kong to serve as doctors. I don't know whether you have started that exercise and if so, the outcome. For non-registered or doctors not registered in Hong Kong or doctors with limited registration and also doctors trained overseas, perhaps, or we should relax the requirements uh for anesthesia. Well, you don't really need to communicate with the patient, given that he uh will uh be under anesthesia. And there are plenty of people in Hong Kong who are trilingual and belligerent. I've been discussing with private doctors this possible way out. Now, it may be too much to expect the government to pay. Now, can we ask private doctors uh to serve for one or two days in a public hospital per week? By signing a long contract, there can be tax concession because private doctors may not um be too interested in the amount they can receive from the H A. But then, to shoulder their corporate or social responsibility, perhaps they can uh serve for one or two day in a private, in a public hospital for a week, and in return, they get a ten to twenty percent discount in their tax. Because too many doctors are leaving, the doctor, I mean the government and also the H A must find a way out. You should relax the Cantonese uh requirement. You have to do that. Thank you.
Under Secretary, yes, I thank Mister Tommy Zheng for his suggestion on the tax concession system or mechanism. We want more doctors to come help at the public hospitals. Now, for attrition of doctors, actually, the ordinance did not mention that the doctor must be well-versed in all three languages. Doctor Ko, I thank you. I thank the member for his suggestions. Now, our recruitment efforts is warmly received. Now, we have made contact with graduates overseas, and there are lots of follow-up work to do. Like Mister Zheng said, we no longer have a requirement that the doctor must be able to speak Cantonese. And that applies to all disciplines. Now, in our previous outreach campaign, we have touched base with doctors who cannot speak Cantonese at all. They expressed their interest to coming to Hong Kong. We are more focused on the skill sets they have. And also, under the spec- under the limited registration scheme, we have non-Cantonese-speaking doctors serving in the H A, and we appreciate the work. Thank you. Miss Lady and Quok, thank you, Chairman. Now, question eighty-five. Now, in the reply, the number of patients getting help from the psychiatric outreach program has reduced from, has increased from one hundred fifty thousand people to some two hundred thousand people this year compared with a year ago. The situation is worrying. We have a serious shortage of manpower in psychiatric healthcare. So will there be any measures to plug the gap? As it is, psychiatric outreach service is very limited, and it is very hard to get a place. So will the government allocate more resources to psychiatric healthcare services and improve the system as a whole? Now, in eighty-four, I have some questions about the establishment of the district healthcare centers or D H I, D H C. This is a system to support district healthcare. Now, we have to be mindful of the mental well-being of society as a whole. I think it would be better if we have counselors or mental or psychologists in these at D H C. It would be better to help the mental well-being of the residents. Now, I want to focus on Chinese medicine's role in preventive care. It is very useful in terms of preventing onset of disease. And also for chronic patients, Chinese, Chinese medicine can offer a lot. So will the government consider improving the establishment of district healthcare centers to offer Chinese medicine services? Under Secretary, thank you. I will take the question first. We agree that Chinese medicine can play a very huge role in preventive healthcare. As it is, D H Cs are working together with the Chinese medicine sector. There is a comprehensive network. Now, in the Chinese medicine developments blueprints, we will elaborate more on how we can work with the trade to offer primary healthcare services. Doctor Ko, please. Thank you. As mentioned by Miss Quok, we attach importance to psychiatric outreach services. Now, we try not to put psychiatric patients in hospitals. We want them to be cared for in the community. Now, during the pandemic, we don't en- we didn't encourage patients to come to our hospitals, so we try to reach out to them. We did that through redeployment of our manpower and also through video consultation. Since no physical checkup was needed, telemedication or teleconsultation has been a very useful tool. So in this year, we will hire more case managers to increase our capacity to care for psychiatric patients in the community. Mister Pang, Commissioner, thank you. Concerning the scope of service of D H C, it is three-tiered. The first tier is publicity and education. Tier two is screening. Tier three is disease management or case management. Now, in terms of publicity and education on psychiatric health or mental health under D H Cs, they are education for members of the public to take care of their mental well-being. Now, in terms of screening for psychiatric illnesses or mental well-being, we don't have that yet. While in exploring the way forward for our service scope, we will study that and enlist help from the private sector. Now, we are establishing connection with the service providers in the private sector for the first tier. So it's just a follow-up. Now, we are very concerned about members of the public's mental well-being as a whole. So it would be best if we can offer a deep-level mental counseling service for members of the public in person. This is something that we need in society. Now, we have social workers in D H C, but they may not be equipped to give help in this regard. Thank you. Please consider that. Next, Doctor Junius Ho. Thank you, Chairman. Fifty-three and sixty-two questions from Mister Chow Si Chong and Mister Michael Tian, manpower of healthcare professionals. Now, in reply to Mister Chow Si Chong's question, you have given us the figures. Now, more than ten percent increase is seen every year for hiring post-retirement professionals. In two thousand twenty-two, there are, there were one hundred and three such professionals hired. Now, I don't have the figure for two thousand twenty-three yet, but I think it will be higher than one hundred. Now, in two thousand twenty-two, there was a wastage of four hundred eighty-six doctors. Now, even if you are able to hire post-retirement colleagues, you can make up only it only make up for twenty-one percent of the wastage. Now, I'm happy to learn that there are recruitment exercises from overseas. The reception is well and doctors don't have to be able to speak Cantonese. I think that's a good idea. We have to put patients' interests first. Previously, for doctors from the Commonwealth countries, they were able to treat patients even they can't speak Cantonese. Now, we have the Medical Registration Ordinance Amendment. Now, under the special registrations scheme, we can allow graduates from overseas coming to Hong Kong. However, we don't see any real results yet. And also, the requirement is that the medical schools overseas have to use English as a medium of teaching. So they have, so the doctors have to be able to speak English to be able to treat patients. Is that the case? What about the doctors in the mainland? They are treating the one point four billion population in the mainland, even if they can't speak English. So concerning recruiting doctors trained in the mainland, will there be a target? A number this year and a number next year? Can you promise us that? We have reformed the system, but we haven't reformed our mindset. Doctor Ko? Thank you. We also attach importance to what Doctor Ho mentioned. As mentioned in our previous answers, in recruiting doctors, we focus on the skill sets and the medical knowledge of the doctors. And of course, they have to be able to adapt to our medical system and be able to care for our patients. Now, we have the new registration system. We don't limit the origin countries of the doctors. We also accept doctors from the mainland. Now, last year, a lot of doctors have come from the mainland to offer us help. They gave us a lot of support and also helped us learned, learn a lot. Now, we have the G B A Doctors Exchange Program. A dozen of doctors are coming to Hong Kong from the G B A, from other cities in the G B A to not just support us, but also exchange the experience with us. Would there be a target, say, a number of doctors hired from the G B A to help us? Doctor Ko? Of course, we want to expedite the progress and also enhance collaboration. We will work harder on this. Thank you. I'm asking for an indicator. I know you will, you will be working hard on this. Can you set the target, say, a hundred this year and a hundred fifty next year? I don't think that's reasonable, Doctor Ho. Rather than indicator, you have to think about the availability of the talents. There must be. That's my own view. Doctor Ko, thank you, Chairman. Now, we have been collaborating with the National Health Ministry, so we will look at the actual situation. Thank you. That's all for this session. I need to allow three minutes for our staff to take care of the venue. So I suggest the next meeting, uh next session begins at eleven oh two. Thank you very much.